This conference will now be recorded.
It's not working. Thanks. Okay, this is not working. Actually, or is it maybe with the smart board?
Um, who could help us?
What are you doing?
What are you doing?
Too hard.
I didn't know, Joseph, COVID lasts a month, Jason.
Cool. Yours did because you had all the variants. It's been, it's been a day. I tested positive.
Just a day ago.
But my son's tested positive two days later. So I'm, I...
Funny button.
And they're laughing about it.
Oh, yeah. And I took a, a little bit as well. I don't know if it's gonna help.
Well, the meeting was starting at 3:30, 3:31.
All these phones. A lot of background noise.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're on the caller, I guess you can't mute yourself, right?
I'll call the, oh.
I'll call this work session to order. Please bear with us. We're just trying to get the smart board to be smart for us to keep up with it. All right, it looks smarter now.
Now it does. So, the, let's see what the rule is. It is unhosted. This is, oh, it's in the village that's unhosted.
Okay, do we want to start with that?
Do we? That's fine.
Okay, for those of you at home, I don't know if you can see the smart board. I hope you can. For the village's benefit, we are...
Patrick updated.
Just trying to see where people are that are unhosted and hosted right now in the village so we can have a visual image of where things are. Yeah, and I, is there any, is there a box or anything under that tells us the village boundaries? If not, it's, we can all, I think we all know where it is.
There, there, there. It's not as well defined, but I do have the legend. These are the planning districts. The colors coordinate.
Okay.
That's Mrs. Evans's house.
Did I? Okay, so, the first question. How many unhosed STRs do we need?
Can you answer how many do we have in the village?
We're in three categories. Village Center, Village Ridge, and the residential condos.
Let me add this up.
Um, condos, village center, what else?
Residential, village residential.
Unhosted?
Oh, okay, so I just, I just got your call.
On the map?
But they're included in her list too.
New, well, they're in the list. I've got the list. All right, so let me add up.
I mean, originally, regionally, we were concerned about condos residential STRs. That's why this whole thing started.
Okay.
Hi. Hi, this is your manager, Wendell.
It is, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for you to sit this way, the better chance you'll have a seat in the board.
Hey, Laura. It's awesome. 118 according to...
118.
118 unhosed totals in all districts.
And would it be really hard to break it out, Peter, on no village center and village residential? And if we're asked, 10 minutes of stuff, then we'll do it later.
Let me see. These have a permit. Not like unfurnished.
Right, can't be any of those.
There are. So...
Are you keeping up with what's happening, Jason?
Mike, didn't break, so here's the condos. But it's not broken out whether it's hosted or unhosed, right?
Nobody's hosting.
They're all hosted.
They're all hosted.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
Unhosted.
You can, it's a condo, that's right. Okay, so there's 58.
58 condos, okay. How many village residential unhosed? Wait a minute, do we, yeah, unhosed, right?
How many village residential unhosed? 80.
80. And then village center? Unhosted.
Six.
Hmm, that's not true.
But they have a...
Can't be right.
That has adopted two.
You can get Mike's handwritten add-on.
This is...
Use that plus another page.
What other page?
Village residential.
One where you just were looking at the condos.
Okay. It goes more than 100.
There was another...
Main Street, okay.
Yep.
23. 23 plus 6.
Plus 6 what? From the other sheet?
From, yeah, right.
So 29?
Yes.
And then town residential, is that broken up too?
Town residential and the village.
In the village, right.
Town residential and the village is 17. So that's more than 100, we need to.
So, just need to, so all we need to do is add up 80, 58, 29, and 17. What'd you get? 1, 4, 2, 1, 6, 2, 1, 6, 9, 1, 79. Okay, so, it's our opinion that we have 179 unhosed vacation rentals between...
All districts.
In the village.
In the village.
Okay.
You didn't add South Lake. There's nine in South Lake.
188.
I forgot some. And Gateway Corridor is 6?
94.
Now Gateway wouldn't include village center?
No, that's Gateway Corridor.
Okay, I'm sorry, how many, how many were in Gateway?
Six.
Okay, so our new number now was, um, one, I stopped adding.
I had more, I had a different number.
I did too.
What did you have? Well, what was before the six?
I have 184 before the six.
Me too.
Oh, okay, so we have the numbers right though. We just have to add them off, correct?
Yes. 80, 58, 37.
Waiting for someone to come to China and tell us we're slow. 193? Is that what everyone gets?
So we're going, or actually, I have to say, 193.
So, it'll do for now.
Adding up the numbers.
Okay, so we have somewhere right now in the village, 193 unhosed vacation rentals. Does anyone have an answer to how many unhosed vacation rentals do we want to have in the village, or is that going to be an ongoing question that will be answered by everything else?
For now, that should be the maximum. Which would be...
Okay, that's, that's at least an answer. Max for now.
Not in Gateway, not in village center. Might be residential.
Oh, I'm sorry, so are, are you asking, um, do you think this is, we should have, we should have more this or less as the village as a whole?
He's not saying anything. He's asking your opinion. The question is, how many vacations rentals should we have in the village?
Unhosted.
Unhosted.
I, I apologize. I, for me, it's a nuanced question because if we have, uh, like village residential, that, whereas I would be substantially more strict with some caveats, or at least the people that I represent would want it to be more strict. That meaning, that, that number can come down, but the, the Gateway Corridor and the village center can expand depending on what happens. So it's hard for me to give a number. It's more about the, uh, the approach to the overall holistically, the village, and more specifically about the zoning district.
Yeah, well, I think that question's a really good one. How many vacation rentals do we need? I think it's really, at this point, its only value is to provoke our thought when we're looking at all the data of where people are. So I really didn't expect an answer, although at least Peter's, that's the max for now is a good one. So I think at this point, if we can look and see where these people are. I mean, if our goal is to not, is to have protected neighborhoods, I think you can see quite a few areas. I mean, just look at the Oneida, the Greenwood. How many people are there?
So...
And you've got Hillcrest. You had...
We did, we did.
I think if you put all unhosed it on there, we can, we can tell where the regions are.
That is all unhosed.
Okay.
Oh, that's a lot.
If you take South Mirror Lake...
Not that county condos, there's no condos on, on, it's, it's on...
There. There's no condos? That's right, well...
There's no Water's Edge, there's no Rachel Wood, Andrew Boy.
Hang on. Oh, so here's Pine Hill.
I didn't notice, it's not even there.
So, uh, so we can filter it, we, we can't, we can do condominiums, but we can't do both.
That's okay. Let's, let's start with the other, we're, we're missing it, we'll go back to them.
This is Rob McTaur on the line. Am I able to ask you a question from the line?
Are you saying, can you ask a question?
Yes, please.
Uh, not at this time. This is really, at this point, a workshop for the village board members. But towards the end, after we've gotten away, yes, we'll be happy to listen to as many questions as we can.
Great, thank you.
So one of the questions we've been asked is, South Lake, correct?
Yes.
And that is, the pink area, that's the south end of Mirror Lake, or is that not included in that South Lake? It's, the South Lake is, is more Lake Placid, not Mirror Lake, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the pink would be village center?
Yes.
At this point?
The light pink.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is like the Lake Placid Club property, you know?
Yes.
Um, Darcy or Mike, if you have a plan development, is that something we can regulate by law? I don't have an answer to that. Does anybody?
Nobody does.
Okay, it's good enough.
I mean, that's a question we need to have a legal continue to ask. So obviously, they're heavily concentrated in the Hillcrest area.
Yes, well, and it does look like the south end of Mirror Lake, depending on what we have in mind to do with it. There is only one, five of them there now. For once, we may be out ahead of something. Although I'm guessing a lot of that is the club condos, the club golf house, club property. Parkside, I'm surprised. Lower Parkside, it shows only four?
Five, there's a dot here.
Double dot. And Upper Parkside, well, actually, Upper Parkside...
Parkside has 1, 2, 3, 4, well, 2 on Upper Parkside and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in Lower Parkside.
Yeah. So the total is seven in Parkside.
You, you know why there's none showing, none Barely Drive? One showing?
Where are you looking?
Well, don't forget, we're only looking at village. We're not looking at town. Right, it's only mine.
I mean, the village line is, is right here. So all this section here.
Is it possible that there are no rentals?
And Beach Hill has a lot more than two rentals.
Well, then...
Well, but that might also come under it.
It might come under, in a different category. So, I mean, I... Here's hosted. But that's only showing one in Beach Hill.
But show Beach Hill, that's interesting.
Are you just surprised?
Yeah, I'm just surprised. Barely Drive, their, almost entirely vacation rentals, nothing showing.
And you, just asking, you know this for a fact?
See, where the cars come in, they're in the same place though.
I guess this, this goes back to enforcement or...
Well, I don't know for a fact, sorry.
I, I, I didn't mean it like that. I'm just asking. What about the imagination station you guys have mentioned? Is that on?
Excuse me, Laura, could you please refrain from talking to me much, a board member, thank you.
So what did we add up as unhosed? 110?
193 is what I got.
Okay.
But we also know that condominiums are a different filter.
Yes, they are.
South Lake, I assume, would be the part at the top left or the middle of the screen. Which would be basically Signal Hill.
So the list that the, the code office gave us was pretty accurate, very accurate, as of a week ago. So...
At this point, that should be very accurate, the moratorium place.
Right, right. So, South Lake has a total of nine unhosed.
And South Lake is what we see in the top center?
Yep.
And are we seeing all of the village?
Probably missing a couple.
It's okay.
Let me, I wanna...
I don't want to jeopardize our view.
Well, so...
It's okay. All right.
Yeah, I think that one.
Yeah, that's okay. That kind of, you can get things from that too. Oops.
Well...
It was actually better without the zones in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, nice.
It's okay, I, we can still figure it out. If you really want to take the biggest suggestion by looking at that map, it is Greenwood, Hillcrest, Oneida.
You really know?
Yeah.
Um, Signal Hill? So again, I mean, 193.
Can you now do the filter of how many are in the condos, of course, is that hard to do?
Yes, yeah.
So right now, would you guess that we have town residential, village residential, and village center there? If the only people missing is condos? Is that your guess?
That's everything. It's even 14-day.
Okay, but it, it doesn't include condos.
It does not.
So that's the only thing that's probably missing for unhosed at this point.
It's loading. Okay. There's condos.
So, that would be...
Pine Hill.
Yep, Pine Hill.
Townhomes, I don't know, what's, is Water's Edge a townhome? Considered a townhome rather than a condominium?
They have an association, so...
Yeah, that looks familiar, right?
Okay.
You can also see the Harbor condominium.
And that's obviously the old Club Snowshoe Hair Raccoon. Ah, what else?
Can you be smarter than the smart board with the question, right?
Absolutely not.
You get credit for this one.
I am! I'm tapping it.
Okay, looks good.
So, you've got the, yeah, you've got the Harbor condominiums, Water's Edge, Old Club. This is what you were referring to, right? About across from the golf course?
Maybe, yeah. Uh, can we, can we zoom in? Yeah, that was my question. Because it'll break out how many are in there, won't it?
Uh, you'll count the dots, yeah. Looks like there's...
That's okay, Pine, Pine Hill, we already know the number, right?
Yeah, so... Up there, it only shows three.
So that's not Greenwood, is it?
No.
We don't know how to move the map.
We do, it was supposed to. I don't know why it's not.
Two fingers?
It does do that. Next time, I'll open and take that over, if you want, because we have some, a couple of these at school as well.
What do you, is it just your finger that works?
No, no, but I've just, it would, less stress for you, Jackie, but now that you said that, have fun. Let's go, Jackie, let's go.
What's this, what's the trick, Jason? Is it two fingers? Is it one finger?
So you're muted.
I, I clicked on it, I just talked too fast. Are you trying to move it?
Yeah, move the screen down.
Yeah, you can use two fingers. It's almost like an iPad. Think of it as an iPad, it should. And it might lag, it might lag. So that's the problem with the, at the internet access.
That's okay. I think we got what we needed.
Okay. All right, what do you want to see next? Are you still looking at?
No, I'm, I'm pretty good. Like, anybody else want to see anything different? Let's, let's let you go back to the questions that you got.
Okay.
Maybe it'll bring up something else you want to look at.
Do we want to talk about what happens to the current unhosed STRs in the village residential? I mean, we talked about...
If they're going to be in protected neighborhoods?
Yep.
I think we should let it go as sales happen, as ownership changes.
So, cap?
Cap.
Cap currently?
Cap initially.
No new permits.
No new permits.
No new permits in village residential.
What about homes that are under contract now? That, well, it's something we need to consider if, if... Is there are homes under contract now with that intention? Do we...
Yeah, I didn't think of that, but I think you need to let them...
Happy ability, yeah.
Happy ability.
Right. Would everybody agree with that?
That's a, that's a proven, of course.
Well, under contract, I mean, we've been at this for two years trying to put a moratorium in place for this very reason. I mean, if someone went out and bought one for the hopes of getting it ahead of the moratorium, I guess that really shouldn't be a reason to allow them.
I, and I highly doubt something's under contract right now with, with their intentions and commitment afterwards. I would be really surprised if somebody locally, like a real estate agent did that.
Well, here's, here's an example.
I would, yes, absolutely.
You would? So there's a house across the street from you that said...
Oh, yeah.
Home and income, correct? Because it was a duplex.
Yep.
Can't blame them.
Well, so they're under contract, correct?
Yeah, but that would be, that could be considered a hosted, for, for term rental hold of them.
But what if they do?
Should know, they would know that.
They would know what?
That, what we've been talking about, I would assume that.
Okay, I'm just, you know, playing fool's advocate.
I don't know if the realtor's always telling the truth. I think, Jackie, that second question you asked is another big one. Let's, let's hold on to that one for now.
Which one?
The last question you asked of what do we do?
If some, a home is under...
No, the one before that, of what do we do with the ones that are in, where we want to have protected neighborhoods?
I agree with Peter.
Leave it.
Leave it.
Leave it.
He's chasing sponsorship, and the permit would get renewed.
Wouldn't get renewed.
Correct.
Okay.
I agree with Peter, up to the point where we have something...
Well, and then if that, let's just, Jason was saying something too.
He's agreeing.
I'm sorry, Jason.
No, I agree with Peter, up to the point where we can have a more thorough discussion about it.
If you were here.
But...
You're having it, you're having it.
It felt that easy.
Okay, so a question, and let's, let's just go that avenue and say we are, it's a direction we want to talk about. How many days do we allow them to rent?
Mike said, if somebody fills out a group, we're going to research them. Top board's here in a click, to see if that's any...
I'm waiting on, I'm waiting for the report.
Yeah.
I'm worried, and I guarantee you they can't guarantee this.
Okay, probably not, but... Can they, I know they can't guarantee anything alike, but are they, is it a decent program that works?
I haven't seen it, I'm waiting for them to send us something.
So your initial is it isn't the greatest?
We actually had an interview with them, considering that program, long, a year ago, two years ago. And, uh, they didn't even have a software built yet. It was something that they were future planning, so...
It's not about not being able to read a calendar, it's about able to do something, whether the calendar's, is saying it's a rented date or just a block out there.
Right.
And the only way you can enforce illegal renting is if it's actually approved that they're renting. If they have their friends and family come up, it's not rented. So to count these right now is impossible.
And the other thing I was thinking about on my run today about room, I know, I know your run. I know, that's who, I, my best thinking, if we have night limits, what it's going to do is encourage people to rent off of ours, like not rent through Airbnb, not rent through GM, but VRBO. So there's no taxes collected, there's no money going into a lead fund. It's going to say, oh, I'm going to rent for a couple of weeks because I know that software's scrubbing, I'm going to, you know. We did this once on a vacation where we just PayPal the guy money for the rental, and that, you just sort of managed the whole process, so... I think there's going to be a lot of that.
I think there's a lot of it now.
Yeah.
You know, as, as you say, I mean, I wasn't trying to be snarky about it, but you know, you made that statement, which I would agree with. But we don't have any facts to back it up.
I think night limits were, the folks are renting, though, like the peak nights anyway, when it's the busiest in town, so that's going to cause the most probably, unless it was like 15 nights. But 90 nights, it's, you're covering all the busy, busy times.
So the only thing I see is, if our intent is to have protected neighborhoods and limit the number of people renting there, and we allow the ones that are there to be grandfathered and go from 90 days to 365, how do we get any amount forward?
Because there's no such thing as 365.
Okay, then let me...
You know, I, I'd be, like I said in the past, like two, two minutes ago, I'd be surprised if very few people rent over 90 days, except for maybe in the Hillcrest area, where there's high demand. Because it's so convenient to Main Street, that's where the demand is going to be.
I would have to say, may I interject?
I, but I have no idea. I, I have no idea. It's just, you know, look at their hotels, what the occupancy is at the hotel. Parking, vacation rentals can be different, dead times are dead times.
Yeah, again, except for the last two years with COVID, a lot of people, I think, came there that didn't go to hotels. Stealing numbers.
What you got, Jason?
Well, just being surrounded by short-term rentals, the, the prospect of, uh, the individuals having the opportunity to rent 365 days a year, regardless if they're going to, is actually worse than what is transpiring. At least they're breaking the law if they rent more than the, the 90 days. It's on them. But if we just give them carte blanche, I, I may move if that's the case. I don't know where, because I can't afford anything.
Jason, that's the exact same thing we're trying not to have people want to do, is sell or move or get out because of vacation rentals around them. So I think that's our intent for being here, is to get, get away from that problem.
Yeah.
At least not make it worse, not allow it to get worse, at the very least.
I guess a question, Darcy or Mike, for you. Correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is with code enforcement, you guys could probably use three times the staff you have to keep up with the work you've got. Am I pretty close? And to throw this on top of it really isn't helping anything. Is this something where we should raise the fee for a vacation rental permit and hire someone who sold jobs to take care of vacation rentals? Would that help your, your department?
It'll still be limited to what the law allows, so you can hire more, nobody's going to be out there 24/7 driving around the neighborhoods.
Well, but I'll bet you if somebody starts putting a roof on, they don't permit you know about it.
Well, we created a network and we get people to tell us what's going on, and we drive around, we can see a roof going on.
Right, but that's the...
You can tell that parking, uh, driveway is full of cars, if that's family, friends, or rental business.
We think there's ways around that.
I'm not going to knock on the door and, you know, and ask these people, who are you? I'm not going to knock on the door and, you know, and ask these people, who are you?
No, that wouldn't be the expectation, but I, but I know you've said that in, in the past two years, we've only had a hundred and whatever complaints. And I, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I think there are more people who are inconvenienced and annoyed by this, and they won't complain because they don't believe anything will happen. And, and, and I'm sure you have that thought too, but you can only do what you can do. If, if you know that there's only been X amount of complaints, you can act on them. But there's got to be a percentage of people who don't complain, because what am I going to do?
It's like there's a percentage of people that don't have permits that are renting.
Exactly.
I'm not adhering to that.
No, no.
Again, the process right now, if somebody is in violation, we give them two violation letters and we have to take them to court. They don't, we can't compel them to come to court. They can drag it out for as long as they want and it just keeps going and going and going, so nothing happens anyway. I can pull their permit, they keep renting, I can't do anything, I can't go there and shut the house up. You don't have that kind of authority, so I don't, you know, what's the end game here? We try, we can, we can control some of the nonsense, the noise, marketing and so forth, because that's obvious.
Hi, you've reached Mark Keeling, please leave a message.
At the tone, please record your message. When you've finished recording, you may hang up or press one for more.
Do, do we need stricter regulations in place? Are we only doing the minimum? Can we, can we have a stronger enforcement pile, and I'm not asking your department to enforce it?
You have noise ordinances, you have, in the neighborhood, you have the Village Police Department, call the police. Begin trying to screw the person renting their house, get the people that have caused the problem. Hire more cops if you need.
Well, but by the same token, you.
No parking signs up in places, you don't want to be crowded on the street.
You could legally sit in the backyard with a boombox going until nine thirty and that would be in compliance with the noise ordinance, right?
Correct.
So that does no good.
So three o'clock in the afternoon, a rented house has a party.
But, but, but I guess what I'm getting at is you would never do that in your neighborhood on a, on a weekly basis. But a vacation rental person would.
I get complaints, the full-term, full-time residents being jerks in their backyard.
I'm sure.
Fire pits in their, hooting and howling till twelve o'clock at night during the week. It's the same possibility.
Like if it's the same property that keeps getting complaints, that is on the owner.
It is, so I violate it, and they don't ever come to court because they don't live here, and nothing happens, so, you know. Again, at this point, we're trying to change the language and make it, get it out of criminal realm, get it into civil realm, so we can violate, then we charge them and raise the violation fines and so forth to make it hurt. But that hasn't happened yet, you know, so based on your, your concerns, the number, the number of days is not going to make a difference because you're not going to be able to do it.
So what you're saying is when we go from criminal to civil offense, that will hurt more, that's going to make it easier to prosecute?
It would be easier to prosecute because they don't have to show up and have to get a summary you know, from the judge, huh? Yes, summary judgment from the, I think, from the judge, and find them the fine they deserve, and then we have to put it in language that goes under tax.
Sorry, was that part of the recommendation?
Is what?
So what Mike just said.
He said he wasn't recommending anything.
Right.
She was just saying it's very complicated.
Well, I think it's stemming from your department too, don't you want to go?
I wanted to, we had the language already, it hasn't been approved, it'll, it'll get approved with this, we're not going to do it a new law every week.
Because.
Yeah, when this is all said and done, it'll be part of it.
Because it incorporates the signage too, because they're, right, is it the, the, is it, use code, sign it, making it?
Everything.
It does.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Signage is the meat, piece of all words.
No, I get that, but it'll, I mean, that's why you're saying you don't want to approve this and then six months later have to approve something, you know, the civil.
We're going to put it all together in one package, it's all going to get approved at the same time, the public will have their chance to talk, and then it'll go down the state and it's approved hopefully and we'll go for more. And then I'm sure there'll be nuances we got to work through even after we pass the law, I mean, it's not, nothing, none of this is simple. And it's not like this, like I said, it's not somebody going around twenty-four seven driving to the neighborhoods looking for problems. Whoever, resident or other people. But if somebody doesn't want to call me about what they think is a short-term rental problem, you can call the cops. You got a Village Police Department, use them. You know, people, if they don't want to be the bad guy to call anybody, then we don't.
Mike, but as, but as we just said, they're doing things that you can legally do.
That's what I'm saying.
But three thirty in the afternoon, you can have a.
You can have a party, but even still, if it's annoying, you can still call the cops and say, hey, you know, they're, they're really getting out of hand, it's like a fine or whatever they're doing. You know, depending on the situation.
I think more to me, it comes back to if you or myself has a house, we're not going to be having a party every, at three in the afternoon.
Not many times.
A vacation rental who's here for their one time of the year is more likely to. And if we don't have the enforcement, then we just have to eliminate having them, or.
Well, again, this is what you're working on now.
That's right, but that's the reason for the questions, so you're going to, we could just have to know what you.
I'm just saying, you know, the reality of enforcement is not the reality, the perception of the, of, of enforcement should be. That's what I'm just trying to get across.
And I know you probably can't even judge this because you haven't been able to find anybody, but.
That's not true, I find people.
Okay. But they don't pay the bill, they don't come to work.
Some of them do, some of them, some of them maybe came in to improve that they were not over the limit, and so.
Okay.
But again, it's, it's the kindness of that individual, you know, the cooperative.
The responsibility.
Right. Of the, of the, and others I just logged it off, not even responded to my letter.
Are the fines stiff enough, do you think?
No, they, I.
They're not stiff enough?
I'm recommending to the town board to raise them significantly.
Okay, so your recommendation is to raise the fines, I think we have a three hundred to one thousand.
Three fifty, the first one's three fifty, that's every week it goes out to seven hundred, and then thousand is the max.
A thousand is the max?
Mike, what do you do with somebody who's renting but doesn't have a permit?
Same thing, violate it.
You, you can send.
I can't stop them, you know, I can't go physically put a note on the door and say, you can't come in here anymore.
You can send them a letter.
I send them two letters, I send them a file, I can give them a summary.
Wait, even though they've never signed it?
Can we put on one of those Realtor locks on their doors? Why not?
Okay, well, I think that's one of your questions Jackie, under enforcement three.
China.
Where it says civil instead of criminal, and fines, yes, will be higher.
What, you said recommend significantly, have you given them amount?
Thirty thousand.
Ooh, I like that.
Go up to three thousand, every, and not every week, it's going to be every day. Ultimately, that's, that's my recommendation.
And how about the Good Neighbor pamphlet? Is that helping at all?
I mean, the, the people that are adhering to the rules are adhering to the rules. We're not, we're not regulating the use of the property, we're regulating the users. And regulating human behavior is almost impossible. So yes, there's going to be a lot of really nice people come to this community and have a great time and behave themselves and don't annoy them either. And you're going to get a handful here and there that are going to be the biggest pain in your butt, and you got to deal with it.
Okay, so, as you say, we're, we're trying to regulate human behavior, hey, let's take away the fire pits and the hot tubs.
It's, again, they're cool, but I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can tell a private property owner what they can handle on that property. This is why you need your lawyer sitting here talking and telling you the rules of, of law.
Well, but I would think you could regulate, if you're going to be giving a permit out, saying no fire pits or hot tubs, I would think that could be part of the process.
Yeah, that's, that's a question for your.
Yeah, okay.
Could we do more as far as, or talked about the Good Neighbor pamphlet, could we, is there more that we could do? I mean, I, this was developed.
There's always more education you could do to everybody. Realtors is, if it's a member telling me that Realtors might not be helping the situation. Um, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things we could probably do as far as educating the public. But as far as, again, the people we're trying to regulate, but not the people that own the property or the people that are working in town, it could just come here to card up, so.
And, and do you think there's a portion of people who only rent through local Realtors?
Um.
I know that's a.
There are, there are, and there's ones that are off the grid, using eighty K, letting them buy a home.
Right.
With this kind of stuff, it's hard to track, because our current software doesn't have a contract with them to be able to read this stuff.
To scrub it, yeah. So, going back to my point, if, if there are violations and it was done through a local Realtor, do we find Realtor?
Again, that's.
Along with the owner of the rental, right? Making more people be culpable, so that there's a sense of.
One of the, I want to, I want to name, but one of the Realtors two years ago said he rents most of the properties I rarely drive. One of the local Realtors, maybe they're not even, don't even have a permit for it, you know. It's nice to figure that out, you know, because they pay them directly.
Right.
Well, you just mentioned you have a network, so if someone doesn't have a permit to do home improvement or something, can you use that expertise to help us? How would you have something to tell if someone's renting their house without a permit or all the problems we have, or is it a lost cause?
No, if, I mean, if somebody complains that there's an issue with the property, we call the owner and say, what do you know?
And he says, I'm renting to my brother. Then what do you do?
You have to take his word for it, you know, how do you prove otherwise?
Because he has eighteen, eighteen family members. Well, I think what you're telling me is if we can.
Fraternity brothers that I have up every weekend.
Right, but I, I think what you're telling me is if there's no way to really limit this, no way to know what's going on, no way to regulate the nights, then I really don't see any other option if you don't want them to, to not have them. But then you're even telling me, well, we don't even know, if they don't apply for a permit, they're even renting?
Well, you'll notice if some places renting on a regular basis, if they're not allowed in that whole.
And then what do we do if they are?
Then we go violate them on the civil side.
And then that would be where we'd go to the, from criminal to civil and, and then you'd have to prove it.
Well, they, actually the owner's kind of, goes both ways, in civil, it's a little less cumbersome and some, some of the owners force on the person you're accusing to prove otherwise.
Say that again, so the.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The other thing that's part of the law and that has happened is that you're talking about like Realtors, so every advertisement, so it's not a hundred percent compliant yet, but every advertisement is expected to have their permit number posted there, so if you go on to someone's advertisement, you should be able to see, rather than a permit number.
We just asked for that, right?
No, it's been a part of the law, but we've kind of started.
It's been reinforced a couple of times, but there's a lot of people that are very compliant. And there's still, and there's a lot of people that advertise that don't rent, I mean, so it's confusing, they'll have an advertisement because they thought about it and they never took it down, and they don't want to take it down. Or, or I'm not going to rent all summer because I'm going to be here, and I'm not taking my advertisement down because I'll lose my rating or something on my post grade. So, yeah.
Well, it's like us, we, we book out all our, almost all our rooms book out during the winter for the summer, so it's the same thing, keep your advertising up. Six months in advance, I get that. Okay.
Are the permit fees high enough?
That would depend on what we want to do with them. Right, until you know what your expenses are to police, monitor, handle it, we really can't give an answer to that, correct?
Yeah, I guess you're right.
How about the, we, we talked before, Dean's group mentioned Station Street as areas where people could rent, do we agree with that?
Oh, yeah.
No, Station Street, Detroit.
Detroit.
Detroit. Because, well, only because you got the train station, you got the Masonic Lodge, you got the church, so.
I guess my feeling on that is if we are trying to limit the number of vacation rentals, Dean's thinking this would be a great area to encourage businesses, I think businesses are different than vacation rentals. And I wouldn't mind someone opening a business in there along with canoe or the.
Joes.
Joes and, but I would hate to see the people that live there have their houses go and become vacation rentals. Do we agree with that, that we would take that out of the district, or what are your feelings on that? Meeting from Lisa G's over to Trillium Drive by the train tracks.
Five miles or something?
It, yeah, it is. And I, I went along with it. Now I have Malone.
Still loading.
I know, and I'm still going smaller.
Slower. You know, part of what the problem is?
Probably the internet.
I was just going to say, our connection here is so weak, so slow. And it's a lot of damage.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of damage, yeah. Well, I think we all know what we're talking about there, aren't we? It's from.
Albert's?
From, from Trillium over to Lisa G's. Are we, we going to consider that Village Residential? Or are you going to call it Village Center?
Because right now, yeah, it's Village Center.
Well, that's what, it is, that's what's projected.
It's Village Center, do we want to change it to Village Residential?
Does anyone have a thought on that? I mean, if our intent is to keep people in homes, and if people get approached, however many there are there, I'm selling those homes at inflated price and becoming vacation rentals and losing more, more residents.
Yeah, it is.
Well, we're going to get to that next, President first. Does, I mean, if you need more time to think about it, it's fine, but these are the questions we had. What, do you have an opinion, anybody?
Are you checking the math, Darcy?
Oh, we were just checking.
Oh, okay.
I mean, Village Residential, bed and breakfast is allowed, that's a conditional use.
Village Residential, bed and breakfast, but those properties are, I mean.
Posted. Did we require someone to live on the property?
Yeah, but those properties on, on Station Street are too small, I can't, I mean, I could be wrong, but they're just single.
There's one there that's empty, or another could be, oh, we zone out.
And there's an empty lot, there's an empty.
Way back where.
Yeah, exactly, yes. It, it is huge.
And the way you zone out could be a hotel.
Jason, do you got an opinion on my last question?
I, I support, if you want to rezone it to Village Residential in order to maybe capture a couple more opportunities for people to live or properties, I'm all, whenever you say that, ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm going to support whatever, that, for sure.
Okay, so I guess the question, if we did do that, Mike or Darcy, would then someone not be able to open a business there?
Correct.
So then we shot ourselves in the foot from that standpoint. Is there anything we can do that does not allow vacation rentals but allows people if they want to open a business? Or do they go hand in hand?
Limited to one now.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where that is, you can have one as our current law.
Okay. So, I guess even if we left it as it is, we could still make it a protected neighborhood for vacation rentals, is that true? We're trying to find a way so that we can allow businesses to, to locate and continue there, but not have people losing homes as vacation rentals.
I understand you're doing this, this rental produce anywhere.
Okay, so that would be our option then, okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Okay, so.
Keep it Village Center, but say no short-term rentals.
That's true, that's true.
That's, that's a solution.
Yep, that's good. What, what is the feeling, just a strabo, I think.
Well, I like that idea.
Yeah, right.
That businesses could be allowed, no, no neutral terminals.
We got one. All the questions, we finally made one answer that the group agreed upon. Okay, so how about Upper Parkside?
I would agree with that too.
I would, but I'm just curious what you guys think, anyway.
Right now, it's, it's.
It's Village Centers.
Parkside.
It's Upper Parkside, it's Village Center. And so what we want, we're proposing to do the same thing that we just did with that section of Station Street, where we keep it the same district, same zone, but restrict.
Vacation.
Vacation rentals.
I mean, so I'm just thinking about the issue was with PR shouldn't name names, but I think ninety-eight was the issue, he complained about that, because he was renting a vacation rental.
Well, I think my issue more would be that.
So, there are two crimes. Unhosted vacation rentals on Upper Parkside. According to this list. Two, twenty-six and eighty-eight, there are two unhosed.
Okay, but I guess my question more is, let's take just the example of the building that Teacock's Dairy is in. Okay, but I guess my question more is, let's take just the example of the building that Teacocks Dairy is in and multiple apartments in there. If we don't-
One vacation rental in there now and the rest are, it's worth the long term.
But what's to prevent that building's cells from becoming all vacation rentals?
Mark's got the finger.
What's that?
Because you're only allowed to have one on a property.
Okay, which is-
Unless you're on Main Street, the corridor of the house, that's what it is.
And the one on Main Street corridor is how many?
It's many. It's a permanent, individual rental.
I didn't know that.
And then if you go above a number of anything, does it become a hotel or do you can just have ten vacation rentals?
Ten vacation rentals.
Interesting, okay.
So that problem kind of solves itself.
It does.
Oh, seven? Oh, this is ten.
Yeah.
Have you guys reached out at all to the realtors after that last?
I've sent them very informational stuff, I talk to realtors all the time, they're constantly wanting to ask me questions.
But I mean, I'm just thinking of that gal that was looking for a variance and didn't even have a permit and the realtor that rented them. Is that something that, I mean, should we do that or is that something your office does just to remind them to make sure before they rent someone that they have a permit? Or is that something they're supposed to do now?
Should be doing now. It's like, it's not like they don't know. Everybody should, in the process should be, um, but it can always happen that way. Not wanting to lose a deal, realtor may be inclined to say, hey, yeah, you can rent, don't worry about it. Take them on the run.
So I'm just reviewing all the questions you had, Jackie. It sounds like how effective is a good neighbor policy? I think it's the old preaching to the choir. The people that are reading it and doing it are only the ones that are doing it and the ones that aren't going to read it anyhow. You might catch a few in there that read it, is that, or less what you had to say?
Yeah. The one contacts, I think an hour away is too far. I, yep, I mean, I don't know what your opinion is and, because that means they can live as far away as Plattsburgh.
Yes, we had talked about thirty minutes.
Yeah, at least Serenack Lake, if contacts, if caretakers want to live in Serenack Lake or Wilmington, that's fine. But an hour away is just too much.
Most of them have been very responsive, no matter where, I don't know.
No matter where they live?
I don't, I don't know whether they live in, I'm just saying they've been very responsive, cool.
But still, if you're waiting for somebody, you know, it's ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night and a party is going on.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's waiting for it.
Nobody waits for the contact to drive.
You call the hotline, you make your complaint.
Yep.
The hotline notifies the contact, contact goes, puts eyes on it. If it's something he can do himself or if she takes care of the situation. If not, police who needed, whatever, then we follow up in the morning and find out what really happened. We have a witness that we know and then contact the owner as well and-
All right, but I'm just saying, if the contact isn't Plattsburgh, you wanted to put eyes on the situation, he's got to drive down.
Yeah, well, he took the job.
Right, but that doesn't help the person sitting there wanting to go to bed at ten-thirty for an hour. Okay, well, but like you said, if we wanted to change it, we need to change it. I think we've hit most of the questions here. Are these just the same ones?
Yeah, they are. They're just, yeah.
Reorganized, okay. Does anyone have any other thoughts? Questions we haven't hit upon yet? We haven't talked about all the districts yet. Okay, so throw one out when I've talked about it yet.
So, Mark, I mean, what we've talked about are hosted and unhosted and they all land within all the districts. So it's not necessarily a district we need to talk about, it might be the type of STR.
Okay.
So you've got the fourteen day, which according to the list, the fourteen days. But this is where I noticed a big discrepancy, that I know of a lot more fourteen days that aren't listed here on the map. I know. Because they are the local people that we know.
I just have the same people here.
Maybe they register as fourteen days, maybe they registered as unhosted.
They're not even, they're not announced.
They didn't pay the fee, if they didn't pay the fee, they-
But there is no fee to the fourteen days, right?
We're recommending changes, get rid of all these later different names of permits and just, you get a rental permit, this is what it costs you for a bedroom or whatever.
I agree with you, I think those-
And anybody, you want fourteen days or less, that's your decision. You still pay for a permit.
I agree with that. Again, there's no way to regulate it anyway.
It's my years of landlord, it's my duty to protect everybody.
So, Mark, what questions did you have? Or what districts did you have that you're thinking of?
Well, I know we were talking about South Lake, but, and you were, I know you were the, of the opinion that when you were a kid, that was like a neighborhood up there, South, you know, part of your lake.
There were, yes, people living there, yes. And well, of course, you were in the town portion. Is that Village, is that still Village?
Village, yeah.
Elder school is the town of Sweets, like people in Elder School, Sweets, across that lake. You sure? I thought that Sweets was the Village Line.
Mark, you can skim.
All these years I've been around there?
Yeah, it's way before Northwood Road.
Isn't it Sweets House, that's right on the line?
My old house was in the Village. There's the numbers line here.
Yep.
Where I couldn't see the-
I'm not sure whose house that is, but they're half and half, Town and Village, whoever's locked that is.
I always thought it was Sweets, but it doesn't mean I'm right. The point there would have been the hubbytouse, right, the townhouse? Yes. And then you were to the right of that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Because you thought you were Village, you were a county back then. Okay.
When I was a kid, the town, the village were always town, just your appointment and the town would take over.
Luckily, we had to buy all-
I know, just in Germany, they thought it was the stupidest thing, trying to be people. They didn't solve it for bad, to fix it. What else, Mark?
Well, then, I think that when we talk about town residential, village residential, we, that's like kind of it's an outlier in the South Lake.
So, I asked Emily, so town residential is, even though it's in the village, it's also Hill, Stevens, Norton, but it's listed as town residential. And I was just like, what am I missing? And she was like, because it's the size of lots, that, that whole area is listed as town residential, but it's in the village.
So a dumb question then, if the town has lots that are small, they call Village Residential? I mean, is that, is that a just like residential? There is.
Yeah.
Is a lot size that makes a difference?
I assume that's what the-
Yeah, okay. At least we understand that a little bit now.
I guess I'm good then.
Well, and we go back to the question, do we want to put those in protected neighborhoods where you have those spots that go from the Club Beach up to the Village Line and are up and where they're, where it's currently pink? I mean, that's all right now could be unlimited vacation rental stream, sixty-five days a year, right?
I think we should do wherever the town does, same neighborhood, same type of residence.
Or they could do what we're doing, but I don't know if that's going to happen. Okay, any other neighborhoods that you're, you're thinking of? Jason, how about you, any other questions? You're good, one question.
No, 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 no. I was just waiting for the mic. It seems to be the connection here is super slow, I apologize. I, I guess I'm just going to ask a question as far as more of a review. So I want to go, is it okay if I go back to Village Residential?
Yes.
I, I just want to recap to make sure that I heard everyone correctly. Right now, as it stands, the Village Board, within Village Residential is saying, it's, no one, it's only hosted. Only hosted. And those that are there will stay there until the sale, until a sale happens, a transaction happens and then the permit doesn't pass, correct?
I think you have to look at this as no firm decisions are made on anything. It's like we have all these balls juggling in the air and we haven't decided where they're going to land. And I think we owe it to ourselves to look at all of these different areas and get answers before we start plugging them in. But for right now, we're just to get consensus on what people think.
Okay, to somebody's saying yes, because I, because I'm just trying to reflect on the town board. And, and the code enforcement, it was essentially saying they're really pushing in residential areas, unhosted. And then unhosted, there's, there's, they're getting away from the nights. There's, it's not going to be a night cap anymore. Am I correct, Mike and Darcy, is that the tentative perspective now as discussions regarding the town?
I agree with your assessment of unhosted, but I do agree that they are talking about not having day limits.
I'm sorry, they don't, they don't, they think they're going to have limits on hosted or, unhosted?
I don't think they're going to have any day limits on anything. They're going to cap, they're talking about a cap, overall cap of permits. And then if you have a permit, you're able to use it three hundred and sixty-five days.
Okay, so I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's something we ought to model, but the reason I say, because once we get into the nuances of, are we going to do a night limit? Are we going to wait? I think that whether there's a cap on the permits, they go away. A lot of that has to do with the residential component of it. Not a lot of people complained about the businesses, not a lot of people complained about other areas, even though as a, as a board, we want to look at it holistically and forward-thinking, five, ten, fifteen years. So I, because I think if we approach it and say that we decided, are we just going to have a cap? Or are we going to have a limit of the nights? Is that something, you know, I think that would help. It would be a lens that we could view other districts through. And if it's still up in the air, then it's really hard to do that, for me, anyway.
So, well, Jason, I, I thought we had agreed that hosted was allowed everywhere.
That was a recommendation.
Okay. True, I'm doing the backstroke, you're right. It was a recommendation. And then the other recommendation with that, unhosted, was, there was a cap, which the recommendation, it's the cap now, and yet when they sell their property, the permits then go away. Is, is that what Peter was recommending?
Yes, that's what I was.
And that's-
Village residential.
So unhosted, unhosted in Village Residential will stay as is with a cap and when the property transfers, that permit then goes away.
Okay.
Once again, and cannot be renewed.
And cannot be renewed.
Okay.
And once again, that's what we're thinking about now.
That's a recommendation, right.
I wouldn't say far as record, it's just, it's one of the things we can consider.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Does that, is that, because what I heard you say wasn't that.
Well, I went off on a tangent, but thank you, Jackie, for helping clarify. It's a movement forward, but yeah, I guess. I, I feel, it's, it's, I, I don't, so I, me personally, and I understand Art, I've had a couple of conversations and it, and a short-term rental, like, so there's a perception that unhosted means like there won't be any short-term rentals in some, in some circles and the way it's been communicated. And I'm just like, this is, I have three right next to me, so as it stands now, they will rent, they can rent, in theory, Peter, not, everyone's going to be wanting there, be there on a Tuesday in the middle of February, I get it. But they have the ability to rent year-round. I feel like that's even worse than what is existing now. In my opinion.
The market for vacation rentals is, I guess, we really don't know that answer.
You were theory, as you were running two nights ago.
Which theory?
As you were running two nights ago, you said if, if we lift the restriction, that's going to not force everybody to rent during those peak nights, correct?
Right.
But maybe it's-
Spread it out, spread it out.
Spread it out over the three hundred and sixty-five days.
They may actually use it themselves in the summertime.
Right.
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
Yeah. I like looking at them when I'm talking. People keep popping in and out and getting covered up. My point, what, with the ninety-day cap, there's, people aren't making their property available like in April and May. They want it available in June, July and August where they can get the most bang for their buck for over Christmas. So I know those times for you, being where you are, are probably the worst because people are there all the time. Available other times, it's not necessarily people are going to use it, but it gives the traveler the option to come to Lake Placid, who wants to come for a week in April, which we would love to have them here. They have that option for a house where, right now, we're restricting that market.
The only thing I would comment on that is, great, but let's put them out where they belong, not in residential neighborhoods.
Well, I'm not disagreeing that.
Right, but that would be the other side of what you're talking about, not next door to someone.
Meantime, until the title changes, which may be a-
Maybe something for our next meeting to think about is, what do we want to offer to people that have current ones? Do we want to try to do our best when posed a night limit? Do we want to give them three hundred and sixty-five days for a certain number of years to renew their, and then done? I mean, those are all options. Maybe that's something we should all think about and try to answer next time. Do you have any thoughts of any other questions or shall we compose questions again through the week? We'll try to have them ready for next week. Mark, you good? Ben, Peter? Jason, you got a thumb up, good.
Any questions?
Sure, I'm going to ask if you guys mind.
There's like twenty-one things in the chat box.
Are there?
Well, I, you know, I, I guess we aren't going to want to go long on this, but if people could keep it to two minutes, we probably could go through quite a few. Two minutes isn't very much time, but can you focus the camera? No, it'd be done automatically.
Well, it says thanks, so must be focused.
Thank you, Mike.
See you guys, have a good day.
Bye, Mike.
Does anybody that is viewing the meeting want to ask a question?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Chris Caldrowe. It was a great meeting tonight, I think we had talked about a lot of good things. And my question is, have you thought about engaging the short-term rental community to help enforce themselves as well? As a short-term rental owner, I call myself a part-time resident in Lake Placid and there quite a bit. I feel that, I love the idea of cap, I love the idea of enforcement and governance, but also we thought about having the short-term rental, we help govern themselves a little bit too.
I guess how would, how would they regulate, how would they enforce themselves or what's your suggestion there?
Because if you make, getting permit, you have to be part of that community and that community has rules that it can help enforce. There's also thoughts of, there's marketing companies now that can, they can take the rental requests and they can go to the other websites and help enforce that. So I think enforcement has lots of opportunities that you can really restrict people from renting without going through a community. And then also things like enforcing rules, if a tenant breaks a rule, then we keep their security deposit. We find them, that's easily done and that money goes right to the village. Because a lot of us wanted the village to get better and better. We love it there, we're part-time residents, but how can we help? And that's part of the thing is, we want to help, we don't want to be a hindrance.
Okay, thank you very much for your input.
But as we read, read the chats, they are talking about enforcement.
Right.
And, um, I, you know.
I wasn't reading the chats, what would you?
Well, no, it seems, it seems, you know, that, that one of the biggest issues is enforcement. And again, you know, somebody has said, you know, if, if they're going to, I, I just think maybe we should focus on enforcement.
Okay, well, let's give that some thought.
This is true, I get it. I didn't say I had the answer. I'm just saying that I thought, maybe we should, you know.
Okay.
But you, you guys are here in person.
Thank you for keeping it very nice and interesting to hear. There's three sides to every story, so it's, I try to keep it open mind.
A bunch of stuff, um. Your gentleman just brought up, uh, about self-enforcement. I have four cameras on, on my property.
Hmm, that's a good idea.
My property. I can see it was.
Can you legally do that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and it has to be disclosed.
It is disclosed, right.
Obviously, you can't have it.
There's a sticker on the door.
It says property.
Or lives in areas, yeah. And so we can see everything that happens, and we.
Outside the house.
Outside the house, of course, inside the house, of course.
What about if they were noisy inside? Would you pick up on that from the camera?
We have the ability to turn on the audio, and actually even talk to people outside where the cameras are located.
So have you ever had an occasion where you have a problem and they, they ask you to come, and you go to the camera and solve it? Cuz that sounds like something that would probably be able to be done.
Yeah, we can do that, but we've also never had in 98, 98 weekends, we have not had one.
Let's be a little bit honest, we had one issue, we had one issue in two years, where, uh.
Are they buried in the backyard?
So, what happened?
No, we had a fire pit, so.
We, we had a fire pit, and we provided plywood for the fire pit. But some numbskull, uh, started to break down a pallet to throw on the fire. So, but, you know, we, we, we.
We see you throw the pallet on, right? It was start from there.
Yeah, uh, so, the one instance in, in four, in two years, we, we picked up on rather, rather quickly and put a kibosh to it. That's, goes with the gentleman's self-monitor. Um, and I, I think that would help a lot. Uh, the other thing I, I was thinking of, maybe there can be a residential custodian. It could be one of the neighbors who, and more, more than happy to share the wealth and, and everybody with everybody and, and around to some degree. And if, if we need to have a neighbor that would be literally in eyesight of it, we could share a small fee with them, and, and that would be perfectly acceptable to us.
On the neighborhood watch.
Well, and it certainly would make the neighbor happier to have them, and they're knowing they have some control, and they derive some benefit from the, indeed, it's not a bad idea.
Absolutely. Now, we have owned our property for about three and a half years. We have, without question, put in over six figures to improve our property. We took down a tree that was far more over my neighbor's house than, than my own house. And I never asked anything, uh, in, in enumeration, but they were grateful for that. And I think that when, sometimes when we do come into a neighborhood, we wanna improve things. I think nobody is coming in here and would, would want anything else. Um, I just seem that, I, I know you, I, I don't know anybody, but I, I know you guys all seem to be on the same kind of theme, and somewhat against the short-term rental as a community, uh, but.
But keep in mind, too, we're not against them, we just don't want overrun with them and have no locals anymore. I'm sure where you live, you don't want your entire neighborhood not to be anyone you know, they're all vacation rental.
Would they fall into line as the gentleman on the screen, where we're also, we also come here part-time?
Right, but how much is part-time? Two months a year?
Do you really believe that's possible?
I mean, we're looking for people that put their kids in school, so we don't have graduating last 40, we go back up to 90. We're looking for people that are here to volunteer on the ambulance squad.
Totally understand that.
I mean, that's, that's the direction we're trying to get.
That's a great point. I don't know if you guys can hear me, I wanna chime in again, because I've owned my vacation rental, my first property I bought on Hillcrest. I bought it in 2009 as a foreclosure. I put my blood, sweat, and tears into it, came Lake Placid up to 10, 12 times a year. I'm with my kids, they grew up skiing at Whiteface, growing up, jumping in the lake, being on the water. So I consider myself a resident of Lake Placid. If you look at my Facebook, it says Lake Placid. Um, so we love the town very much, but I think we beautify the town, I think everybody should do that. I've hired people to do flowers, it's local, so I think it's really important, we are contributing to the community, we're members of it, and I think that's really important.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, absolutely, I'm, I'm glad to have the input. I just, so, i- if the short-term rentals were in, in, kiboshed, right? My, my home would still be owned by myself, and we would only be up here cumulatively two months out of the year. And then it would go empty, and, and that, the money and the resources poured in to the town from my guests would now be absent.
It would be hard for you to keep a house that you're only gonna use 60 days a year. It'd be cheaper for you to rent a place with a butler. I have that same situation in Florida. I can't see you, if you're only really, about 60 days of the year, keeping a house.
Well.
Financially, I can maybe do it.
Well, many people can, and, and we, we could.
Well, that's second of all, others, yes, but mostly that comes four, five months of the year.
Yeah, I just, those are some of the benefits of putting the kibosh to it. Again, we, we provide something that other hotels can't provide, we allow people to.
To bring you a pass.
And, and indeed, uh.
Give you surprise with Crown Plaza, all the big hotels will have that.
Really? Okay, I, I wasn't.
It's most of the small places that don't, all the bigger places do.
Okay.
It's probably a third of our market is pretty effective.
Absolutely, you know.
They're family members.
At least now, maybe you can. Uh, the, the other thing is, is that simply, um, it, it, it's kinda like how Uber has brought something into what was a legacy market. There's something a little bit more personal about Airbnb, there's something about families. Um, may not have the means to rent out two or three rooms, but for several nights and get the Airbnbs, we can send that opportunity to them to enjoy that experience. And, and that's nothing wrong with the motels and hotels, it's just something that they can't really provide the way, the way we can. So I, I think you would really lose out on something, and we're, we wanna work with everybody. We, we, we don't want it our way and no other way. We simply want the same respect that.
I have another question for you, if I could. What do you, what do you do about people, Art, like, how many people are you allowed maximum to your vacation rental?
So our property has a small cottage, it's two bedrooms, and we.
So you're allowed five, six, is that right?
We, we don't, no, the cottage, we only allow four.
Okay, but that's, I'm kinda getting at, you rent, you only allow four.
Four, a cottage, and then we have a main house, which is.
There's just three bedrooms, so that's allowed six.
Actually, and plus two more.
We don't allow.
Right, but in your case, okay. What do you do if they have 20 people come over and say hello, and do you allow that?
I would not allow that.
Okay.
That has never happened in our experience, we've not seen that. We, our driveway, you know, meta type, the, the parking situation that you guys brought up is an, an issue for us, because our property is on freeway, and there's no, no real parking available in the wintertime between November and April. So we, we actually, when one unit is rented, we actually block out the other unit because it's really only room for two cars, uh, during.
You sound way too considerate.
Yeah. But.
We appreciate that.
We, 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 we really, we really, we put out, just like that other gentleman, we, we put out blood, sweat, and tears into this project, it's our labor of work. And be really one of our.
And we feel that we're paying our fair share. I mean, we, there are taxes that are coming through Airbnb that are going into the town, right? Um, it's.
Bed tax.
Bed tax.
Nothing's going into the county or the state. You're getting out of 8% tax that all hotels pay. But that's not your fault, that's the state of New York.
Yeah, but.
We're paying for locals, we're cleaners.
Yeah, of course, we provide jobs, too.
Well, like I say, don't get us wrong there. Yes, you are contributing to the community, but what we're trying to do is have people live here.
Understand it.
And if we don't stop, or, we should have stepped this years ago. I mean, everyone's said that, but.
I agree. I, like, I started, I think that there are three sides to it, and I, 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 I'm on the side of the balanced side, which is in the middle.
It is definitely an, an international vacation destination. And that's not gonna change, you know. Yeah, I, I would consider Lake Placid to be something like how Val was 30 years ago. And I just don't see it being a, the one or two of the big centers in the country. I just can't imagine it's really gonna change, move forward.
Like I say, no one is trying to kick people out to wanna live here, it's tying up a house for someone that could. That's, that's the issue, it isn't anything personal. We just have to wrestle with how do we, how do we get that happen?
I, I did feel very frustrated by the, um, the way things were divided in regions. It felt very restrictive for our street.
Well, it is, because that, that's, in theory, before vacation rentals were vacation rentals, that's where locals live. And I think in an effort, let's say that you weren't considerate, and you've got a house that the people are out back, and I know people that, they're not overly noisy, but sitting in a fire pit till 1:00 in the morning, John, I need another beer, and someone's trying to sleep, it's tough.
Right.
And you, they're doing really nothing wrong, but if, so, if you lived there, you were at the house, you wouldn't be out there week after weekend, cuz it's, it's your holiday, I get it. But if you live there, it's not your weekend to have a party. That's what we're trying to regulate, it's so people next door.
People, I, I find it interesting, but most of people, they're coming up, and they're hiking, and they're, and they're doing things in the day, and even when we're there, people in the cottage, the lights are out, 9 o'clock, they're exhausted, they're.
Yeah, so, so you have the, actually have the ability right now, if you wanted to, of course you have to live there, but you have the ability to be 365 days of the year hosted, wouldn't you? Would you like to become Lake Placid resident?
Not the way I, uh, not the way I looked at the map, we, we go on the ground area.
A lot of what we're talking about here is going towards, if you're hosted, you can be 365 days or any second.
In any second.
Right. It's hard to live here. As you just said, the, the incomes are a lot lower and.
Mark's got it.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the time you gave. But I mean, that's, that's all just part of the equation.
Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Art, may I, may I say something?
You bet.
I'll be brief, I promise. I'm like, if you have kids, you've watched the movie Cars. Nobody in Lake Placid, whether it's municipal or business, wants Lake Placid to turn into Radiator Springs. And you know what? It's not gonna happen. But we do appreciate people coming here, we appreciate people wanting to be part of the community. I just, there seems to be a sentiment that if you put some financial stake in, you do get a, you do have a right, it is your property to kinda share and ask and collaborate, but it's, I find it odd that oftentimes, those who do that kind of push and push beyond, because if I was to go to my wife's hometown, dirty little secret, Tully, New York, it's beautiful, but I wouldn't go in and try to make Tully anything other than what it is. And if Tully local officials wanted, saw an issue, and were addressing it, and it negatively impacted, like, what'd be my investment, I wouldn't get mad at them because they have a larger issue they need to solve for their residents. So I'm like, Lake Placid is never going to be Radiator Springs. It's going to be beautiful, and with climate change, it's always, we have enough water that's gonna last forever. We'll be okay, just, I, I just wanna kind of caution those that are coming in, say, hey, be part of the community, not say that like, you are the community, you're part of it now, and then you have to contribute, participate. And even me, who lives here, teaches, I don't always get my way. So it's like, I just, I felt compelled to share that.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Do I take it the hands up?
We have two people raised hands. Bob DiMartino, did you wanna speak?
Well, yeah, um, just briefly, um, I, I understand the residential issue. I live in a residential area down in Conwell, New York. I, I wouldn't want a whole lot of rentals, uh, up and down the street, so I get it. We're, we're retired since 2020, January. We certainly, uh, we spend April through June, certainly every year there. I've been, um, we did that this year, we did five months in 2020, my wife and I. We have five children, they come up when we're up there. I don't know, we've been, uh, we've bought the house in 20, uh, in 2000 from, um, actually, the rental manager for Merrill Thomas, Margie Papier. It was a rental before we bought it. I think more than, and it's on Hillcrest, 74 Hillcrest, the corner of Hillcrest and Marcy. The big white and greenhouse, seven bedrooms, sleeps 14. Um, at the time, I worked in telecom, had four to five weeks vacation, like, take them, which I really did. My family spent time there, and we rented it the other time to defray the expenses. We still do. Uh, I didn't, I don't consider it a blight on the community. In fact, some of my local residential neighbors, the woman with the loud muffler, who beeps her horn every morning at 6:30 in the morning as she pulls out of a driveway, is the kind of nuisance that you find in a neighborhood. It's fine by me, but it's, uh, you know, so we do, uh, we think we're part of the community. We, we've enhanced the house, uh, quite a bit, including landscaping. Uh, we keep it up. It, uh, looks as well as, you know, or better than most houses on the street. But, uh, what I see is that most houses on that street have been. We haven't changed the character of the community, I never considered that. When we bought the house, a selling point was that it was a rental. There already been a rental, it had a rental history. Of at least five years, we saw, when we did our due diligence on the purchase of the house. So, I understand that there may be people in the community who are residents, who feel that they want these neighborhoods to be residential. We have on Hillcrest, a church and a school on one end of the street, a lawyer's office, boarding house, the veranda, um, which hosts guests, and the, uh, the Crown Plaza Hotel. If I were buying a house for my family to live in and raise, when I raise my five children, it would never, never, in the last 20, 22 years that, that we've owned the house, would have been on Hillcrest. It's a through street. The neigh, the few neighbors, the one neighbor we have who built a house on the corner of Marcy on a, on a postage-stamped property, that I assume the village allowed, has children, and they're constantly worried about him. I'm constantly worried about him when I'm up there. So, I think there's, there needs to be a little realism as to what these neighborhoods became and when it became, when they became such. They, that neighborhood is not a residential neighborhood by any stretch of the imagination, okay? You can define it as such, but it's not. You don't want your children to live, residential neighborhoods in my mind, with five children, always two children. You wouldn't want your children on that street. In fact, I never see a child out on the street in that neighborhood, other than the, the property, uh, that was just built last year, and they, they're on their, they're on their front driveway, which is their front porch. Uh, the only other place I see is across the street from us that used to be a rental property, which was a blight on the neighborhood, and a rental, a long-term rental, that constantly had the police there when we were up there. So, I just think that, you know, yous ought to have a little realism as to what's a neighborhood and what's not. Hillcrest is darn near part of Main Street. In fact, the selling point for the house, as far as the rental goes, is that it's darn near right on Main Street, is what people tell us when they come up. So, I, I, I understand the residential aspect of the community, but I, I think not all neighborhoods in Lake Placid are residential now. I don't know where South Lake is. Is South Lake the end of Lake where the, uh, pub and brewery is?
No, it's, 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 when you say South Lake, it's Lake Placid Lake, not Mirror Lake.
Oh, I see. Okay, so not really.
No, you, it's the north end of, of Mirror Lake.
Right, yeah, just the north end of Mirror Lake.
At any rate, I see, you know, many neighborhoods in, in Lake Placid that have been allowed, and not recently, but over the last, I would say, 30-plus years, to become a mix of residential and, and, um, and short-term rentals. Now, as far as problems with the property go, I mean, I've heard about cameras and various other things. Cameras to me are creepy, but, and I, I've, we, with five children, and a large family beyond that, we've always rented properties when we went on vacation. Cameras would make me creep, feel creepy, but I understand they're a reality today, but then I'm 73, so cameras weren't part of my life as I grew up. Sounds like some of the younger folks here would be ready to accept that. Uh, we could do that, um, but.
If I could ask, the year do you rent your property?
Excuse me?
If I could ask, how much of the year do you rent your property?
Well, you know, primarily, we open it up, uh, we open it up in, in December, January, February, and March for certain, right? Uh, because, uh, we have the ski season, and we open it up, uh, certainly in July and August. We will, uh, we will open it up for part of September, uh, because, uh, you know, we do get early September, we'll open it up a little bit in the early October. So there's a chunk of September when we'll be up there. I'm a golfer. To me, Lake Placid, I know everybody hikes there. I'm a golfer, it's golf heaven. That's the world, please don't tell anybody, but it's a best-kept secret. I belong to the Lake Placid Club, and, um, you know, golf freely with and friends, uh, as you can't golf down in the area where I, where I live, you know, year-round, the rest of the year.
But, you can't golf down there? Is there too many short-term rentals down there, Bob?
Excuse me?
I'm just kidding. I said you can't golf down there? Is there too many short-term rentals? I'm just joking, I'm just joking with it.
There's, there's too many golfers is the problem, okay? I played a five-hour round yesterday. After playing in Lake Placid in three, it's misery. But at any rate, the, um, so, so it seems to me that there needs to be a balance of, an actual, uh, from the town itself, realization that, that this wasn't, this wasn't created yesterday, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be solved tomorrow. Now, I do have a question and pardon me for not recalling, but what is the definition of hosted versus unhosted? I mean, I understand hosted would mean that you live on the property year round and, and you're there when people rent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and unhosted?
You might live in Texas and never come to Lake Placid, but you rent your house out.
Right. And I thought there was a six-month-plus residency rule that was bandied about at one point.
That was talked about for the hosted. And you have to be there, as you said, when they're being rented. But I, I think, I appreciate all of your comments, but we, we do have to give someone else a chance to talk and I'll see you on the golf course.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Jonathan Teichman, you want to speak?
Yes, so, and one of the few times my name is pronounced perfectly correctly, so thank you for that. Appreciate the time. I guess I'm actually speaking on behalf of myself, my wife and my brother and sister-in-law because we all own the house just right down the street from Bob, actually, at one-twenty-eight Hillcrest. So we're on the corner of Maple and then along the park. I think actually, maybe the kids you saw playing might be us. So I want to just touch on two things. In terms of the community aspect, you know, we view ourselves as part of the community because we try to use the house as much as we possibly can. And the rental aspect is because it offsets the cost and it seems foolish to kind of have it sitting there empty when we're not using it. To just go back to a previous comment from a little earlier, because there's two families of us together that own it, we probably could afford to keep it. And it just seems a shame that it would just sit there empty.
Just as long as you're going along, you've thrown it out. How much of the year between the two families do you think you use it? Just a ballpark.
We, we very, we didn't really rent it at all during the winter. That's when we mostly use it. And then we used it for about three weeks this summer and then rent it out for the, the rest of the summer. So for us.
Three and a half, four and a half months rented.
Well, not that entire time, but that's when we open it, the calendar, I would say. And what we did, I think, I don't know all of the details, but I know enough from the neighbors that the house that we bought was probably one of the more problematic short-term rentals. We certainly know all our neighbors now. We gave them our cell phones. We let them know that we're only interested in renting to families because we use the house. We don't want to be coming up after, you know, some party house was there. Although a little kid did just draw with permanent marker all over our coffee table while his dad is up there for the Ironman, but that's neither here nor there. So we, you know, I, we went to our neighbors the first weekend we were up there and introduced ourselves and let them know that we don't want to do anything that would ever be an inconvenience or imposition on them. We turn down bachelor parties, bachelorette parties. Basically, we try to just figure out if it's not a family, we don't rent to them. We also follow all the rules. We track the nights and we're not going to go over. You know, I don't want to get too into this. I do think there is an issue with how do you enforce whatever regulations you all decide to put in place, but I, I'm not concerned about that because we're going to follow them either way. But to kind of tie this all in to one of the things that we've been discussing amongst the four of us, is there any view on someone like my, ourselves or on Bob, who is offsetting the cost? I'm not making a profit. If, if you guys wanted to charge five thousand for a short-term permit rental, I would still do it because it just helps me to, you know, not have to pay so much to keep the house going. Whereas someone who owns three or four and has three or four short-term rentals that they're using as a business to generate a profit, which means they have to maximize as much as they possibly can, don't turn down renters, possibly skirt the regulations around the night limits. I view that as distinctly different and more likely to cause issues than someone who is also occupying their house. So that's mostly what I wanted to say. I am curious to know if you could share if it's, I understand the desire to keep residents, but if there are a couple of other things at the top of your list that are very important that, that are driving these regulations? For example, if there's an affordability issue, I think trying to generate more revenue from the short-term rental permits could be a good way to generate revenue for the town and village to then help create more affordable housing for people to be able to stay in the area. Other than that, I pretty much echo everything that Bob said. So he, he, he did a good job there and I'll leave the floor to anybody else who wants to speak. But thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep, and if you have any questions for me, obviously, I was listening earlier and I think you guys have some questions that may be able to be answered by someone who does rent their place. So happy to, to answer if you needed that perspective.
Thank you again. Is there anybody else to speak?
Bob Stevens here. I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, yeah, I, maybe the meeting's going a little long. You've gotten a lot of representation from Hillcrest, but yes, I'm in the same area, Highland Place, Highland Lodge, we call ourselves. And yeah, we bought, I, I was at the first Village, I guess it was the survey results meeting. So maybe I've already spoken my, my piece. Glad to hear other Hillcrest folks are, you know, hoping you, you don't come down on us too hard. And you're confirming that we are a high-density, short-term rental area. So, you know, and our houses are valued, they're, they're just, I guess because of proximity, we are very desirable homes for rental and, and to purchase, I guess. But, you know, being within walking distance of Starbucks is, it is appealing. Yes, we're a five-star VRBO hosted, or call us unhosted property. My daughter runs, runs it. We, you were interested in sort of surveying a few of us, so. Yeah, we used to rent it out a hundred and thirty nights a year. Now we're down to ninety.[1711.82]